Alder Coore?
Yeah.
Alder Holquist will be possibly attending late. Alder Spade?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th meeting?
Move.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item D, appearances. First up, we have a proclamation recognizing members of the Manona Police and Fire Departments. If you'd like to stand over here and I'll read the proclamation. We have one for each group. This is related to the Tecumseh Avenue incident a few weeks ago. We thought we'd like to recognize the officers involved and the firefighters involved. Whereas on September 6, 2017, the Manona Police Department was notified that a Madison Police SWAT team was in Manona and preparing to apprehend an attempted murder suspect who was found to be hiding in a residence on Tecumseh Avenue. And whereas, Manona Police personnel, including Sergeant Jeremy Wingy, Officer Kenneth Ginther, Officer Jared Wedig, Officer Kevin Schneider, Officer Taylor Pedersen, Lieutenant Curtis Weagle, and Chief Walter Ostringa assisted the SWAT team in securing the scene and setting up a command post at City Hall. And whereas, the Manona Fire Department was also asked to respond on standby to the incident. And whereas, the suspect, who was armed and refused to surrender to police, was still in the residence into the early morning hours of September 7 when fire erupted from the house. And whereas, the Manona firefighters, who were on scene, were then plunged into a critically dangerous situation, trying to control the fire in order to protect the police personnel and surrounding neighboring residences while working in the middle of a dangerous tactical incident. They were on the ground behind bulletproof shields, spraying water to control the fire. And whereas, the members of the Manona Fire Department, especially firefighters Jacob Bisbee, Alex Bowden, Alex Rosnick, Captain Robert Miller, and Chief Scott Sullivan exhibited extraordinary bravery, putting their own lives at risk in order to protect lives and property. And whereas, the suspect was eventually apprehended and the fire extinguished. Due to the extraordinary efforts of the Manona Fire Personnel, no one was injured and the fire was confined to only one resident. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council hereby commend the members of the Manona Fire and Police Departments for the dedication and bravery they exhibited on the morning of September 7. The residents of the City of Manona hereby thank and honor them for risking their own lives while fulfilling their duty to protect and serve. Signed in the City of Manona, Dane County, Wisconsin, this second day of October 2017, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor. Thank you very much. (applause) We really appreciate it. We know this is not what you necessarily sign up for, especially going to the firefighting service. So, thank you very much. Alder Moore missed all the excitement.
Obviously did.
Obviously. All right, I think we have one appearance here. Diane Cronin, 4309 Winnaqua Road would like to speak and register and speak against the Cold Spring Lake Viewing Area proposal. If you'd like to come over here to the podium. If you could say your name and your address.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Cronin, 4309 Winnaqua Road. I've been in Manona for just over five years now and have very much enjoyed living here and certainly appreciate the opportunity to talk with the council here tonight. As one of the two households most impacted by the proposal for the Cold Spring Lake Viewing Area, I just truly appreciate the opportunity to talk with the council and express a few of the concerns that we have related to it, primarily related to safety. And there were others, other neighbors who have spoken previously at the Parks and Rec Board on the topic as well. With regard to safety, the primary concern that we have is increased traffic on the dead-end road. So Cold Spring Avenue is a dead-end road that doesn't have an opportunity for a turnaround. And the only real places to turn around are private drives. So, the primary concern is, the proposal as it's written does not include no parking, standing, or stopping sign. So, that's something that would be just greatly appreciated if the proposal does go through as planned, just to consider the safety. We do have very small children. Our neighbor across the street has great concerns about emergency vehicles being able to access the area and things of that sort. So, not intending to speak on her behalf by any means, but, you know, voicing some of the concerns that she had raised previously. And then, the other thing that's a little concerning is with the dead-end street, the only way to get out, like I said, is either the private drives, turning around that way, or backing onto Winnaqua Road. So typically, when cars pull down there, they back up onto Winnaqua Road, which is very dangerous. It's a very busy street and it's also the lake loop. So, you know, that presents concerns both for pedestrians walking down the street, for bikers on the lake loop, and then obviously, the traffic concerns with backing into the busy road. So, again, just wanted to express the safety concerns. And, you know, we've observed as, you know, that area's gone from being, you know, more full and lush to being more empty at different times of the year and as things have been, you know, maintained in different ways over the years. And the thing that we've seen, being able to observe, living right there, is there's an uptick in unusual activity, I'll call it, when it is cleared more. So, you know, instances such as a woman driving into the lake and almost, you know, taking her vehicle very near. My small children, who were there, going straight into the water and contacting emergency vehicles who responded, which we're much appreciative of. They pulled her from the water and got her vehicle out. But, you know, even just the day-to-day when there's a man down there who approaches my children and things of that sort that I've witnessed and can be a bit unnerving, which any of you who are parents, I'm sure can appreciate the concern when activity such as that occurs. And also, with being so near the high school, there is at times activity that, I'll let you imagine what it may be in terms of the high school kids doing down there, but we've observed certain things occurring in that area where, again, the more draw there is to there, the more of that type of activity that has been happening. So, again, just request that if this is going to go through, to the extent that some level of privacy could be maintained, so that, you know, again, as a parent of small children, do at least try to prevent some of that interaction would be very much appreciated. And also, from a liability perspective, if it's not a clear property line, people may not know they're going onto private property and, you know, when you're at risk of losing absolutely everything because someone could go and do something crazy on your property and you have no control over it, that's a scary situation to be in. And I certainly wouldn't ask any other resident to put themselves at risk in that way. So, would appreciate if, you know, something to help maintain property lines would also be considered. Also, from an environmental perspective, very much appreciative that the current plan did react to some of the concerns we raised previously about having some native trees and grasses there to help prevent erosion and runoff into the lake. I think many of you have likely noticed the increased algae levels and things of that sort where the runoff does not, where it adds to the algae issues. But, I did see the proposal now includes having some native trees and grasses, which is much appreciated. But, the one concerning thing is, there is a spring there. And so, putting rocks over a spring, right now, there's a proposal for rocks on the shoreline and pouring concrete. So again, for the sake of the spring, which is a source of water for the lake, would kindly request if that could be reviewed to make sure that it won't hurt the water source. So, again, just respectfully request, you know, that the committee consider the access to parks which are currently available. Three lots north, Stone Bridge, a beautiful park exists. And two blocks south, Schluter Beach exists, which are great areas. So, there is accessibility to parkland very nearby. And, you know, if the committee does choose to move forward with this, again, just request that you please consider our concerns around safety and think about including a no parking, standing, or stopping sign in order to help alleviate the traffic concerns so that we don't have cars coming down there, again, where small children are in the area. And also, the current proposal has a plan to install signage on Winnaqua Road, which again, it seems that that would cause more automobile traffic where, to the extent that, you know, the way I understand the goal of this plan was to allow access for people to come and walk down and see sunsets if it's too far for them to walk one direction or the other. And by all means, if people want to come down and see sunsets, I mean, of course, who wouldn't want to, right? But, it's more a matter of, you know, signage up front, it's going to cause more automobile traffic. And that's really the concern and the safety issue. So again, if we could minimize the, or not have a sign up front and have the no parking sign. And the other thing that's in the plan currently is optional arbor vida hedge, where, again, to the extent that we could have some level of privacy maintained to help alleviate some of the, you know, interaction there and noise level and just maintain some level of privacy and indicate where, from a liability perspective, someone might at least be able to determine where private property starts, that again, would be greatly appreciated. We're happy to work with the Parks and Rec Department to help in any way we can, but would certainly appreciate if these items could be considered.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alder Wood?
Does your driveway go onto Cold Spring?
We have a U-shaped driveway, and so it goes to both Winnaqua and Cold Spring.
And what about your, the neighbor across Cold Spring?
Her driveway goes onto Cold Spring.
And then, if I understood you correctly, you feel that when it's, when it's more, there's more vegetation growing up, that it's safer?
Well, interestingly, there's just a lot less, what I was terming the unusual activity, we've experienced a lot less of it when there's more vegetation. So it-
Just not seeing it?
You know, that's possible. I mean, I can't say, if I don't see it, I don't know. I'm saying the things that were obvious, like, you know, where we truly had to call the police because a woman ran her car into the water. Or where I've, you know, witnessed people kind of starting to interact with my kids and gotten scared and had to interject. And, you know, there have been, or the high school kids, we have plenty of instances of those. Or we did have people come over and start flipping off of our pier into two-foot deep water and almost had a heart attack, but stopped them. So, you know, we have these things happen, but again, there's a very high correlation where we witness these things when it's more open. And so, it's an observation that we have, having lived there for five years. I know our neighbor on the other side has lived there nearly 40 years, so I understand she plans to write and express her perspective as well. So, you know, she clearly has a longer tenure to share her experiences, but-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a question, and I know it was raised as well in the Park and Rec Committee, which is, have you or any of your other neighbors, besides the incident of the woman driving down into the lake, ever contacted the police to alert them to the unusual activity that you're referring to?
Yeah, like when our cars were broken into, we reported that. Quite honestly, if we called every time a high school were down there and it appeared that they were, you know, I think the police would get a little annoyed with us if we were calling that frequently. But if, certainly if that's the preference, we could do that. But, I don't want to be a nuisance in any way either. So, the items that were bigger ticket items, we've reported.
Are you talking about high school kids smoking marijuana?
Yeah. Well, that and other activities in their cars in the evening. Which, again, you know, don't necessarily want to be a part of it or witness it or have my kids witness it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
There is no public hearing tonight. Item F, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move or approve.
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, unfinished business. Item G1, consideration of Resolution 17-9-2215, approving the terms of contract with Wisconsin Professional Police Association Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division. It's put forth by the Finance and Personnel Committee, which did approve this last week. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just one, is this consistent with what finance, what we had seen at the last meeting?
Yes, there were no issues raised any further from the WPPA or its members, so-
The language-
Did stay the same.
Language stayed the same.
Correct. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contract is approved. Moving on to new business. Item 2A, consideration of Resolution 17-10-2217, approving the 2018-2022 capital improvements program and 2018 capital borrowing, put forth by Mayor O'Connor. I think we are going to just discuss, bring up each one of these separately for discussion purposes, each of the amendments. Mr. Houtaker, is he here? Oh yeah, I don't know if you want to make any comments or about the summary, or, as you can see on the first page, is the summary of all the amendments and-
Yeah. Page basics, I was going to say, so that first page, all the summaries of what's decreased and what's increased. So, no questions. Just so I know, I get to the First Amendment, the description's wrong, so just want to correct that before we start on it.
Okay, right, 18, I guess we'll move on to that and then the First Amendment. And Alder Holquist, when he knew he might not be here, I think we each got a sheet of his comments about these different, the different amendments, if you'd like to read those. The first one is, should read Library HVAC, 18-1, not street project. This is related to decrease the Library HVAC project by $195,000 for updated information related to the project. We've gotten better numbers since the committee of the whole and narrowed it down to some things that could be done first and we think they very well may take care of the problem. Ryan, I don't know if you want, does anybody have any questions for the Library Director? No, this is put forth by Alder Kitzler. All right, 18-2, to move ambulance purchase and associated equipment to 2019, put forth by Alders Wood and Spate. Any comments or questions?
Just one, Alder. Holquist, he'd like to hear from the chief about pushing out one more year, but he states we're already at six years old and it was noted, we wanted to be on a five-year rotation. But the current primary ambulance actually, I believe, went into service, correct me if I'm wrong, with February of 2013?
Correct. The current ambulance went into service February 13.
So it won't be five years until-
By the time we get the new one ordered and purchased, delivered, and get it ready for being in service, we're looking at five years, 10 months, so just under the six years.
So, this is a question I had, Mark, maybe you remember, could answer this, but if we approve, so if it's approved in the 2019 budget a year from now, you, once it's approved, could the council go ahead and give authorization to order it? Because we don't pay for it until it's delivered, right? Or is that not right?
We have, we actually get a better price if we pay for it upfront. We did the same thing with the engine, where we ended up saving approximately, I want to say $40,000 if you purchase it upfront. Like I said, if we approve it for the 2018 budget, we still have to, we still have some more development on designing the ambulance, then their lead time for building it is, right now, 280 days. So that puts us out quite a ways into 2018. Then we get it back, we still have to put all our radios in it, get our equipment put in it. We have specialized stuff that we, we Manonaize it. And then, so it'll be closer to the beginning of 2019 that it gets in service.
Just a follow-up. We've done both ways in the past. Sometimes we paid upfront, sometimes we ordered it early and then paid for it later. So it's done, it's been done both ways for the city over last, with fire trucks and EMS.
Okay. Just one other question. There's been a reference to this recommended five-year schedule?
It's actually a six-year, is what we, what we, our replacement is a six-year.
Okay. My question was, where does that come from and is that-
Based on usage, the amount of calls that we have, and as we move forward, not only the maintenance increases, but the, for lack of a better term, rideability of the vehicle. When you have someone that has a cervical spine injury or a hip injury, something to that extent, a vehicle that is used as hard as it is and whatever size of a vehicle it is, and traveling on our Madison, our Wisconsin pothole-laden roads, the chassis take a, take a pretty good toll. So, you know, comfortable ride for a patient with either a cervical spine injury, that they're on a longboard, or a hip injury, it definitely makes a difference.
So, the six-year cycle, that's an internal-
Yep, it's based, yep, we don't-
Schedule.
Yep, we don't, we don't compare ours to Madison. Madison, I want to, I believe replaces theirs every four years. Other departments can get by with a longer period because they don't run the number of calls that we run.
Okay.
Alder Kitzler?
Do we sell or trade in the backup ambulance? And I don't know how much you get for it, I don't know if you have a good example, but waiting a year, does that depreciate that much more or?
That, no, it really won't depreciate that one that much more. The problem that we'll have with our backup ambulance right now is, it's a 2006 Ford, and in 2006, 2007, there was a class action lawsuit against Ford based on issues with their engines. So, selling this one, I'm not optimistic that we're going to get a whole lot of money for it.
Anyone else?
I know we're not necessarily debating it, but I do get a little worried by moving it back a year, just with the experience we had with the fire truck that was delayed and delayed. I think it took a year and a half plus by the time we got it actually in operation, and in operation was maybe a month ago. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there as a comment, at least at this point.
I just had one comment. I, my main concern with this is that we have an awful lot planned for the capital budget in 2019, not that we're necessarily going to be approving all of that, but I just wonder about pushing another big item onto that, on top of everything else, so. Anyone else have any other comments? Alder Kitzler?
I'll just echo that I tend to agree with that, that we're going to buy it this year or next year.
I would definitely echo that. Because I'm seeing things in 2019 that aren't there even, but probably need to be, so.
Anyone else? Alder Wood?
So, just, one thought, if we did leave it in 2018, one thing we've done in the past is not given authorization to spend the money until at least partway through the year, which does save some debt service costs. And that would still get it here, you know, closer to your target date. Wouldn't get it here by then, but anyway, that's a possibility. As far as, you know, the 2019 issue, I mean, I agree, it's got about, what, $8 million in it right now, and the next year is 6.2 or something. They're both well over what the average of what we've spent, like in the last five years. And I think there's, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that needs to slide. And I think, you know, in my opinion, I'd like to see some of it start sliding this year, and I think it'll be a cascading kind of thing. And there's some really big projects, both in public works and in parks, you know, like million-dollar-plus, $2 million-plus projects that, you know, could potentially be pushed out. Some of the parks projects, breaking them up into two years, where you do design and engineering one year and then do, you know, construction the following year. So, because yeah, the amount that we have scheduled to borrow-
Right, that's not going to happen.
Right, which is, and I understand that this is, that wasn't, that kind of always often happens with the out-year budgets, that they sort of, things get pushed there and becomes, can become kind of a depository of a wish list.
Right.
So.
But regardless, we're going to have to do some of those things, and we will have this ambulance issue.
I just had one more kind of comment. I know having a new vehicle doesn't necessarily drive revenue, hopefully, with an ambulance. But, as far as the EMS Fire Department, that is the revenue generation for the department, and it's heavily used. And so, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Anyone else? Alder Spade?
I just wanted to state that my support for this amendment is not a, this may sound laughable, but it's not a clear indication that I will vote for it, but I want to say for the sake of the newer Alders, you know, when we go through budget time, as the chief knows, we have to try to figure out what things we might forego if we're going to have to make a tough decision. I'm not sure we're in that spot, but it seemed like a logical thing to put on the table while we're going through these often challenging deliberations. And then, you know, we're going to have to sift it out and make the tough call. So, that's why this happens. I mean, sometimes we put things forward because we feel very strongly about needing to cut them or delay them. In this case, I agreed with Alder Wood that it's prudent for us to consider, this might be something we would delay. I think my position would be, if we can afford to do this, we probably should go ahead and get the ball rolling. I like the idea of putting the delay on it for the purposes of borrowing, which would just be a matter of a few months, if I understand that correctly. So that would be my position on this.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Scott. Next item is 18, Amendment 18-3, adding $3,500 for senior center exercise equipment. Alder Wood, do you have anything to add about that?
Not really, I mean, this was-
Diane.
This, I mean, yeah, if people have questions, Diane's definitely better able to answer than me, but I became aware of this by the friends of the senior center board meeting, that it was on Diane's wish list for the senior center, and it struck me as something that we really, is kind of a core thing that senior-
if we're going to have to make a tough decision. I'm not sure we're in that spot, but it seemed like a logical thing to put on the table while we're going through these often challenging deliberations. And then, you know, we're going to have to sift it out and make the tough call. So that's why this happens. I mean, sometimes we put things forward because we feel very strongly about needing to cut them or delay them. In this case, I, I agreed with Alder Wood that it's prudent for us to consider, this might be something we would delay. I, I think my position would be, if we can afford to do this, we probably should go ahead and get the ball rolling. I like the idea of putting the delay on it for the purposes of borrowing, which would just be a matter of a few months, if I understand that correctly. So that would be my position on this.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Scott. Next item is eighteen, Amendment 18-3, adding $3,500 for senior center exercise equipment. Alder Wood, do you have anything to add about that?
Not really, I mean, this was...
Diane?
This, um, I mean, God, if people have questions, Diane's definitely better able to answer than the, than me. I became aware of this by the friends of the senior center board meeting, that it was on Diane's wishlist for the senior center, and it struck me as something that we really, is kind of a core thing that senior center does. It's not really, or maybe Diane, I don't know, it's $3,500, I don't know.
Do you want to maybe explain what, is it a big equipment, or weights, or something you need more room for? I guess that's some of the questions.
Yeah, it's not really, I mean, it's not really new, it's not a new thing, it's sort of, we're already doing it.
Yeah, so it's all small equipment, to be honest. That's why I never, it never occurred to me to request it as a capital item. So it's really free weights, bands, and a new cart to store our free weights on. So heavily utilized, and we try to clean them, but the neoprene covering on the weights is wearing. So I think, and I passed this information along to Doug, it's probably been seven years since we purchased the weights. They're used every day of the week. And I brought it to the friends, just thinking these were small items, but when you add it all together, it, you know, when Doug posed the point, it makes sense. It, it'll last several years, and it does add up the dollar amount. So I appreciate him proposing this as an amendment, as a capital budget item.
Many further questions?
I'm just, I guess I would go back to your thought that it would be a friends item. Why is it not even, I mean, is $3,500 out of the questions for the friends? Or when you total it all up, or why, and why did all of a sudden get pulled?
Oh, it's, it's probably not out of the question. There are nonprofit fundraising arms, so they could use that money for other things, such as, you know, speakers and entertainment. You know, their budget is not huge. This would be a percentage of what they've saved over, over the years, so, yeah. I'm sure they would support it, it's just a big, big amount for them.
Right.
We didn't have a chance to ask this earlier, so the idea of shared equipment? So this, these are being used in the community center, and I'm not sure if Jake is here?
Jake isn't here.
But the idea of, are there other pieces of equipment within the community center that are shared and can be used for a variety of programming standpoints, or just this?
Yeah, and in reality, all of this equipment is actually stored in the lounge upstairs in the community center. So I'm sure there are many classes that use them. The ones that we're replacing are the lighter weight free weights, so we're not doing the, you know, 10, 15-pounders, which don't get as heavily used. But, yeah, parks and rep programs would definitely have access to this equipment.
Anything else? Thank you. Next Amendment 18-4, to adjust the Huska tennis court reconstruction to $175,000, put forth by Alders Wood and Spade.
This one is, it's more of a, this is kind of a more of a correction. It was a mistake on the description. And the description is, is a request form, he had $150,000 for Huska tennis court reconstruction, and $25,000 for the master plan. It should have been 175, but we actually budgeted 200,000. Or we actually, so the budget number is 200,000, or 170,000? It'd be 175, because 25 is the master plan, so.
Okay.
If that makes sense, everyone.
So it's still a total of 200,000?
Yes.
But 175 is?
175 is for the, so it's really kind of correcting the, the capital request form.
How does that affect this next amendment, which is to move the master plan to 2019?
Well, then, takes the 25,000 out, you'll leave the 175 in.
So I think, if I may, those two items should have been separate budget items kept, rather than put together. I mean, they're at the same park, but they're totally different. Yeah, so, anyway.
Any questions about the tennis courts? 18-5, move Huska Park master plan to 2019, decrease of 25,000. Alders Wood and Spade, any questions about that, or comments?
Uh, this, I proposed this in part, you know, sort of looking at what we talked about earlier, about moving, starting to sort of slide projects forward. And this is, would be tied into the eventual, what is now a, a million-dollar project for Huska Park construction, which seems like a ballpark kind of figure, I don't know how. Anyway, so that's, that's, that was the idea. And Jake, is this the one he was okay with? So, I don't know.
Anyone else? 18-6, to add traffic engineering pedestrian and bicycle study plan to the public works budget in the amount of 40,000. Consultant would both assist the ad hoc pedestrian bicycle committee with its work at each meeting and develop a plan for the committee to review and recommend to the council. My question about this is, how does this affect the money we already have in for, is this different than what we already have added money for that Dan proposed? Dan?
Yeah, that was my, our intent.
So it's in addition to that?
Right. And I don't know if Strand was aware, I, I, through Dan, I had communications with Josh Straka at Strand to try to come up with a dollar figure for this. And it's, I think it's about $10,000 to do the, for them to assist the, the yet-to-be-appointed ad hoc ped bike committee, attend the meetings, do prep in between the meetings and so forth. And to do a good study and plan, I guess, really, at the, to develop a good bicycle pedestrian plan, they estimated about 30,000 for that. So, and I think the Winaco Road thing is really a separate...
Right, it is. The Winaco Road item is, is a design review, mainly from Maywood, South Towne Bridge Road, and then various locations as you go north, up at Outlook is another area, by Schluter Park is another area. Basically, an overall review of the current design, and then making recommendations for any changes.
We had put that in, though, to work with the bike ped committee in part. Correct? So what I'm wondering is if...
What Alderman Wood is, is talking about is basically another wing, or complementing what, what the Wild, or the Winaco Road design review is.
But what about the 10,000 he was talking about, to work with that committee? That would be to work with it on different things, or?
There, there could be, if, if we, if we put both scopes under one project, perhaps we could save a little bit of money there. But the 15,000 was to participate as needed in, in that committee, and review the design, and come up with recommendations for change. What Alderman Wood is, is talking about is, in addition to that Winaco Road study, is, is forming a bike ped plan for the city. Citywide.
So the two things wouldn't really overlap?
They wouldn't overlap, but there might be a small section that would overlap. We're, we're talking maybe a couple percent of, of the project, but I think we're all, we're, we're looking for a completely separate plan for, for the city as a whole.
Doug, do you see the bike ped committee also doing, I'm not against a plan for the city, but do you see them also working on that?
Right, that, that's kind of my thought, was that the consulting and traffic engineer would work with the committee throughout, and then also develop an overall plan that the committee would ultimately review and approve, or edit, or whatever, by the end of their work.
In addition to making recommendations about Winaco Road?
Right.
I mean, that would be part of the plan, too, I suppose.
Well, there, there would be two separate scopes.
I mean, it might, if this passes the next meeting, it might make sense to do them as a joint RFP, put them both in the same...
That's what I would recommend, right? But, but as far as the Winaco Road design review, there's not a bike ped component to that, other than looking at Winaco Road, South Winaco Road.
And how it affects bike ped, right? But that's the reason we kind of combined it with that. Alder Spade?
So my motivation for this has more to do with building on the University project, and specifically with the upcoming McKenna Road project. And one of the points that was made by some people in the community is that, you know, if we make a complete street on McKenna, but we don't have a plan as a city, you know, why, how does that make sense? And I, I agree. Like, we need a plan as a city, and we need to be budgeting to make safe routes to school a priority. And I don't think we can do that with just the University plan. I think we need to have a consultant help us have a real plan. And back for a number of years, I mean, when we've talked about maybe doing this, numbers of 40,000 or 50,000 have been tossed around for a total, you know, residential street plan. So I thought this was a prudent measure to take, so that we could actually do the legwork. Whether we invest in anything is a separate matter, but if we don't have a plan, we can't implement it.
So are we going to be doing a complete streets plan, then? Is that what you're saying with this money?
Well, I'm interested in having this...
I just want to clarify what we're doing.
...side routes to school, and kind of build on the, you know, some, some particular intersections and areas of concern that, that came out of the University project. But that's not ready to build, that's just a, you know...
And, and with McKenna, that road is on hold, because we need to figure out if we're doing sidewalks or not. And this, this would be part of, part of that plan.
So if we do that, together with the money we've already put in, did we put in 15, or did we...
15 for Winaco Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Just another point, the Legacy Community Alliance for Health was also going to help us with the project, and our recommendation was the active transportation. Exactly what role they will take, and what resources they can provide, we'll be meeting again in a few weeks to hopefully refine that down a little bit further, and we'll see where we go from there. But it, that is another resource we'll have available to us. Okay. Nancy?
I guess I would just follow up from, uh, mayor, from what you just asked, which is unclear as to what we're paying for here. Which is, are we paying for an all-city bike study plan? Are we paying, are, are we going through and picking out certain streets related to the schools that we want them to look at? Or are we focusing on certain intersections? Or, I, you know, I'm unclear as to what we're trying to, I mean, I completely agree with you, Alder and Spade, that we need, that we have to have, first have a plan. I totally support the idea of having a plan, but I'm just curious, I don't know what the 30,000 or 40,000 is getting us. And it would be helpful to know what it, what exactly it is we're trying to accomplish before, at least before I'm willing to support it.
Yeah, so, basically, this is what I, you know, talked to Dan and to Strand about, is, would be, you know, a plan, yes, it would be a city, citywide...
Citywide.
...plan, but focusing on the main, the streets that have the most vehicular pedestrian and bicycle traffic. In other words, they're not going to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to spend time on light, very lightly-traveled streets, unless they're, they provide continuity or connectivity to a bike or pedestrian route. I think, you know, the details would probably, would need to be fleshed out in the RFP of exactly what, what we're asking for.
Okay.
If we don't have the money in the budget, we can't do the RFP, and we can't do the plan, so.
Would it help to have a little clearer explanation in the description of the amendment, maybe?
Yeah, whatever, it's clear.
I mean, I mean, one clarification I'd be interested in, for the 10,000, are they leading the ad hoc committee? What, I mean, are they just consulting? I mean, if they're just consulting, 10,000 seems pretty steep, but if, I would question whether they need to lead the ad hoc.
Plus, we had the 15,000 for them originally, which I know it isn't.
The same exact...
To cover all these things, but some of it's overlapping, and...
I don't even think the ad hoc committee's set, I mean...
Well, it isn't, I've been, I'm waiting for the money to be approved first, to get through the budget season.
I, I don't think they would be leading the meeting. They would be attending and providing expert advice and comments. They would be providing any plans or any draft documents between meetings to present at the next meeting kind of thing. So, I mean, when you're looking at a, a traffic engineer at the rate they charge, and if we have 12 to 15 meetings, that adds up quickly.
I think obviously the RFP is going to need to be pretty exact about what exactly we're looking for, and how much we expect them to do, and...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that the ad hoc committee has like a clear direction, because it sounds like in some ways, they overlap, but in some ways, they're two different projects.
Right.
And so I just want to have a clear picture of what that 15,000, what the 40,000 gets us, and what we're trying to do on the ad hoc committee.
Because originally, my thought for the ad hoc committee was mainly focusing on Winaco Road, some on Bridge Road, which also has a lot of issues with bicyclists and pedestrians. So this sounds like it'd be expanding, that ad hoc committee focus quite a bit, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Not that it necessarily couldn't be, but...
Right. I mean, you, you could also look at just amending the Winaco Road capital budget line item to citywide, and just combine the funds and make it one project instead of two, so.
But what you're talking about on Winaco Road also includes street redesign, perhaps, or?
Uh, the, the design for South Winaco, they're going to be reviewing that as part of that charge.
The issues with the various lanes and the bumpouts, and what we can do to make it safer is, was the focus. But then we also have some issues on North Winaco, around Schluter Beach in particular.
Yeah, I mean, I do kind of wonder if there's a possibility, if we add, you know, added those, combine those into one consulting contract, that, you know, could do it for less, like 50, instead of 55.
Combine the scope, yeah.
It's possible. I don't know if you two want to think about it, and maybe have a different resolution, or if this is fine, a different amendment?
We welcome other people to think about it, come up with their own ideas.
Is there concern amongst our peers here, that, I mean, is it just...
I don't think we're, anybody thinks it's a bad idea. I think it's more just trying to get the focus between the two chunks of money that we're talking about here. And it's, and it just is expanding what we had originally been talking about quite a bit more, so.
I guess I, I would say one thing, you know, the taxpayers paid for the south end of Winaco to be poorly built or rebuilt the first time. And part of that was due to a lack of vision and a lack of commitment to making our roads safe for not just vehicles, but for bicyclists and pedestrians. And if we're serious in Manona about addressing that, it's going to take more than a commitment to just redesign one of the newest streets to make it as it should be, but also to address this more globally. And I think that's what the University project was about. And I think it's quite simple, if we're going to step up and look at that seriously as a city, we're going to have to pay to do it. And we do have a good start with University, but we do need to have a comprehensive plan. And so I think that it would be foolhardy for us to simply look at the one stretch of road that we botched 10 years ago, and not think about, and, you know, we're, it's contentious right now that we're talking about a sidewalk one block from an elementary school, connected to one of the, you know, major sidewalk corridors we have on Dean Avenue. So what that says to me is, we need a plan for the city. And I think the city is willing to, to bite that bullet and embrace a thoughtful approach to this that gives us some corridors that are safe for their kids to be able to walk to school, and for the rest of us to walk around and not be out on the pavement. I just spent Saturday in the Twin Cities, and I biked from St. Paul... I just spent Saturday in the Twin Cities, and I biked from St. Paul to Minneapolis and back, and I was overwhelmed by the thoughtfulness of these communities and the, the facilities that exist to make it easy for someone to safely bike or walk, not just across those cities, but all the way along the Mississippi River. I took a totally different path coming back. And I mean, these are municipalities that are light-years ahead of the Madison area in attention to, uh, safety for all of its citizens, and I think the city of Manona is just as enlightened as the people of the Twin Cities. And I, I think, you know, but we're gonna have to put some money into the planning, and that's really what this is trying to do. But it is true that I don't, I mean, I, I don't want to say what we need to do. Traffic engineers and the consultants need to look at this and help us understand what makes the most sense with limited resources. I don't want to make the same mistake we made at the south end of Winnequa Road. I don't want to be the council that designs streets, but, but the only way we're gonna get good feedback on how to make this a better city, um, a few streets at a time, is gonna be to spend this money. So that's where this is coming from, and so I understand that it's inherently a little , um, squishy and, and not clear, but I, I mean, that, I feel that's almost by design. If we were to prescribe what needs to happen, then why hire a consultant to begin with? I mean, even though I think it's a little bit obvious what the main points are, and I hope we can, you know, identify six of those, and if, if it would help the council for Doug and I to do that, you know, we can add that to this request, but I-
I, I think the question is, when the original proposal was to deal with immediate problems that we are hearing a lot about on Winnequa and Bridge, with the thought that in the future, we may very well be expanding, you know, doing something about the rest of the city also, and that's, you know, fine, if, but I, so I think we're choosing, we just need to decide if we want to just focus on one portion of bike ped problems in Manona, or if we want to do a much more expansive, uh, study and plan. And, and I, either way you want to go, I just want to be sure we know what we're talking about and what we're gonna be voting on, so...
I will-
Alderwood?
I'll get together with, with Dan and get in communication again with, with Strand and see if we can, you know, because Strand is, they've, they've done a lot of these things, and get a better idea of what's a good scoping statement for the project, and work with Dan to figure out, should the Winnequa Road thing be separate, or should, should we, you know, combine the two, make sure that we get the issues that you want to get addressed on Winnequa in there, but also do an overall bike ped plan, so, and try to come back with something by next time.
Okay. I'm agreeing. Anyone else?
Just one quick thing, I know you guys are talking kind of prices five thousand, ten thousand, there. Whatever to recommend with that is, I imagine you want to get this ad, ad hoc committee going as of January first.
That's what I was thinking.
So we won't borrow until March, so if there's somehow the cost are up or down, we can always adjust to borrowing. You know, if we budget forty and it comes at a thirty, we'll just borrow the thirty on that one, since we, we'll know that right away, so something to think about.
Okay. Anyone else?
It might be jumping the gun a little bit, but I'd be interested on, uh, kind of the mission of the ad hoc committee, I can guess what it is.
Right.
And I, you know, I'm fully supportive of this idea, I'm just trying to get a clearer picture of exactly what we're trying to get to, and I want to make sure, you know, that ten thousand to assist the meetings, different things like that kind of play into it, but I'm supportive, I just want to know what-
And I think it sounds like the mission may be changing-
Yeah.
-or expanding, so... And that's part of what we need Doug to work on a little bit, or Doug is going to work on it, yeah. Anything else? Okay, uh, number seven, to add, ten thousand for second AC unit at City Hall, sponsored by Alder Spate.
So, uh, this item was identified by Brad Broome, uh, looking at the numbers for replacement of the, of the AC units, um, and essentially, I think we're, we're currently budgeted to replace one, and this is adding the money to replace the second unit, and it just, uh, there are certain costs that we're going to incur while replacing one, and, and it's seen that they're, they're both a similar age and approaching their natural, uh, lifespan, and so it just seems prudent for us to, to do them both at one time, uh, and then not be involved in having to, to crane up additional equipment, um, a year or two from now when the other older compressor fails.
I think Brad was thinking too, that if we do approve the City Hall HVAC work that we would be doing, and only bring in a crane once to get the new units on both buildings at the same time. So any, Alder Home Quest?
I'm not sure if this was the answer earlier, when you guys went through the city or the library ones?
We haven't, I guess we did discuss, we did cover that.
And that had to do with the balancing, um, if I remember from the committee of the whole meeting, there was a discussion about, after they come in and do the balancing, there might be additional items that are required? Is that true, or is the balancing cover-
I think Ryan can answer that.
Perfect.
All right, so I'll try to do my best Brad, Brad impression, 'cause he's the one
that has the knowledge. But talking with him, so regarding the, the library one, based on, um, the Commercial Air's recommendation, it'd be replacing the five rooftop units and the controllers and the software for that. Once that's in place, we'll have a, a, it'll be better, more accurate to then balance it out, see if we need to replace the air handling units and then sections of the ventilation system, and then go forward from there, but in talking with Commercial Air, they're, they were pretty clear that any, uh, increase in costs, whether doing it all at once this year or down the road, it's negligible, there, the increase would not be that much. So the main issue to fix the, the issues that we have in the library with the HVAC system would be the, the units up on the roof and the software system and the controllers. Once that's in place, it'll be better, but then they'll be able to do a, a balance, balancing of that, and then identify what issues we may want to keep an eye on moving forward, and then we can kind of look ahead for maybe, you know, between one to five years, I would assume, maybe even longer, on how we can improve those areas.
So the balancing is basically seeing if there's anything else you might need to do, right? And they go in and test all the vents and all the-
Yeah.
-duct work, is the way Brad explained it, and they may do some tweaks here and there, correctly, and then it's possible that they may also recommend more work, we're hoping they don't.
Right, I mean, when Brad said, so when they, when they put in the new units, and they kind of do a, I don't know if balancing would be the correct term there, but they, they'll make sure it works, they'll make sure everything's functional, everything's working, but then, once that's in place, they'll be actually evaluate the entire system and say, okay, here's where areas could be more efficient, and then, but that's, that's the end of that project, and then that, the more efficient stuff, that's, that'll be a separate project.
Possibly.
Possibly.
And I assume that's the same thing as the City Hall balancing.
Yeah.
So it isn't really what it sounds like? It's more determining what needs to be balanced, sort of?
That, yeah, I mean, that's the way, I mean, it'll, it'll work, it'll be an improvement, but it won't be, the, the maximum, everything was replaced, but it will definitely be an improvement, and we'll be able to better know when we may need to replace things down the road.
And he said these air handlers, this goes back to the library, are very simple pieces-
Simple technology, yeah.
Simple technology, yes.
It hasn't evolved from a technological standpoint, there are few moving pieces, the ones we have in the building, one we believe is original to the original building, and the other one was added, I believe, when there's the, um, the addition, but-
They're virtually the same.
-from what they can tell, they don't need to be, they don't have to be replaced right now, they are functioning.
Yeah, so... So anything else about either HVAC? Okay. Uh, eighteen point eight, twenty-five hundred for media, for contingency, for capital items. Funding for the media capital was shifted to update the media room from the committee budget, this will allow the department to purchase equipment if needed. The media's kind of a, a different, I, as you know, uh, it's not usually money we borrow for, it's money that comes out of the fees, um, and so we're spending everything they had budgeted to update the media room. Will, would you like to?
No, nobody uses these.
Exactly.
So, uh, with our budget of updating the media room here, we've basically left no money for anything else the rest of the year, which isn't really feasible, 'cause there's bound to be something that we're gonna need to spend money on. Uh, so instead of going back to council and getting approved for, uh, a small amount to spend to fix a camera or to buy a piece of gear we need, I would rather, um, put an amendment in that would allow us to do what we need if the time came and we needed to purchase a piece of equipment or repair some gear.
Um, so, I missed it in the presentation, this was money that's coming out of the, the fund balance for-
No, it's actually gonna put us right at the limit before we'd have to take any money out of the fund balance. So this is coming out of the franchise fees, uh, that we get each year from Charter and AT&amp;T, and, uh, the budget for, uh, the capital budget for, uh, the equipment in this room came in about twenty-five hundred under our allotted spending amount, spending amount.
So this is really just opening up the authority to utilize the finance or the franchise fees to the fullest capacity?
Correct.
And it really isn't money that we're borrowing?
Correct.
Oh, so this will be from the franchise fees? I thought this was in addition to the franchise fees.
No.
Oh, okay.
Who doesn't fund that?
Okay. This is, then again, more of this odd thing where we consider this in capital, even though we don't really borrow for it? Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Uh, next, uh, number nine, to move dispatch painting of thirty-five hundred and include it as a project under the building improvement capital account. Alder Home Quest?
Yeah, so this was, this is shift that, we have a lot of other painting and general maintenance that we do, and we had another area that, um, those are typically funded out of, and it sounds like this can be incorporated in that funding stream.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah.
Doug?
Just to clarify, so would, would this mean add thirty-five hundred to the, the building improvement capital account?
No, absorb. So it'd be reducing the thirty-five hundred from the painting and absorb it within the general maintenance for-
More in the operating, correct?
What's that?
It's more in the operating budget?
No.
Or it, it will be part of the general maintenance that we're borrowing?
So there's a, I don't know if you guys have your books, but we do have a capital account for H twenty-seven for building improvements, thirty thousand, it's kind of in Aprils, there's really, some projects aren't all designated in there, so this would be a designated project within that account.
But right now, it's not adding to that account, it's-
It's, no, it's not adding to, it's just designated, so that thirty-
It covers capital projects that come up during the year?
Yes.
Is that right?
So that, these, you know, thirty thousand minus, or that number one is-
Thirty-five hundred. Okay.
So I, I agree with the general concept, that, in fact, I would even extend it, you know, to include other buildings, especially, you know, the, rather than having separate building accounts, building accounts for each building, combine it into, to one, maybe library gets a little tricky to do that, but, um, I guess the question would be, we can discuss it next time, is whether there's enough money, or if we designate this as a project we want done, with the, with the thirty thousand, is there, you know, enough money, basically? Will there be?
Um, my understanding is we have used that account for other buildings, and we are going to do that, in fact, this year, because we have a-
Yeah, major expenses coming up.
Yeah, we have a major issue going on with plumbing in the community centers.
Right, so my question is, with that major issue and other things, is, if we say, well, do this project out of that same, out of that thirty thousand, will there be enough money there or not? So we can figure it out, and, well, it's no next time, I guess.
Unpredictable is the best answer I could give. It looked like, you know, we were gonna have more than, you know, too much money maybe by the end of this year, and then we had this big problem come up over community center, and it's gonna be fifteen thousand or more, it sounds like, and plus run of restoration, so wildly unpredictable is the best answer I can give you, because of the age of some of our buildings that we have.
Okay. Maybe, do we know what the, well, what the average in that building improvements account has been? Could take a look at that, not tonight, and figure out, you know, is thirty thousand the right amount? Because obviously, if things come up during the year, you can always do budget amendments and, you know...
It usually is what we budgeted, it usually comes in close to what we budget, so, some years are up, some years are down, pretty close to what we budget. But I can get those numbers.
Is that true for the, for this year? Do we expect it coming close to budget with this plumbing?
We were way under it this year to this side of the city.
Okay.
So we still should be okay, you think?
Well, probably-
Provided nothing else happens.
Mm-hmm. And how we decide to go with the restoration of the bathrooms too, so...
It's more expensive than fifteen, twenty thousand, and there'd be some other issues.
Anything else? Uh, next item, number ten, to remove nine thousand for street tree survey update, I think, Alder Home Quest, did you say you would draw this?
Yeah, I'll withdraw, but I'll give a little kind of understanding of the initial thoughts on it. Had to do with, um, at the committee of the whole, when this was initially discussed, um, the idea that there are some projects that we do as a city, that I think we could reach out to some of our, um, other community partners to look at opportunities to, um, to partner with them. We have a variety of schools in our area that need opportunities for learning experiences, and I saw this as a possibility, um, the timing just doesn't seem right to explore that, given where we are in the year.
Okay. And the final item, eleven, to remove a hundred twenty thousand for the library vestibule, Alder Home Quest.
Yeah, so this, um, was a follow-up from committee of the whole in the discussion regarding the project that originally had the two vestibules, one on, uh, this floor and one upstairs, which then was, um, changed to include just new glass on this floor and continue with the vestibule on the second floor in the children's area. My concern, um, came out of previous discussions about entry points to the library and significant investment in our entryway and stairwell, and significant investment in our, in our parking lot around, um, accessibility, around entrance, and, um, in addition to that, the reduction of the entryway upstairs, previously discussed about, um, safety concerns. And I, I'll leave it at that to start.
Comments? Can you expand on the safety concerns?
I-
Go ahead.
I would like to speak about the safety concerns. Um, being that the entrance up there, um, enters right into the children's area, um, I know when I bring my daughter, um, and she plays in that play area, um, the doorway is like six steps away, and I always liked the fact that that wasn't a useful doorway, 'cause it would take nothing to, um, go out that door. I know my daughter, she would like to do that. Um, and also, um, it prevents people coming in off the street, walking right into the children's area, and helping themselves to a child and walking out the door. So I think that, um, because it's not a doorway that we've had open previously for extended periods of time, it's a newer thing, and as far as I'm aware, I know in the one point it was before they did the reconstruction of the stairway, um, but I would argue that it's probably not necessary being that we just put in a new parking lot and redid the whole entrance.
Well, Andy, I was gonna first, but I'll speak-
I missed the last part of what you said, Jennifer.
Um, I'm not sure it's necessary being that we just did the parking lot and the, reconfigured this entryway.
Okay.
Alder Kitzler?
You know, from the library board's perspective, that entryway is always gonna be open now, it's only been closed for, previous to my time, I think it's been closed for maybe three to four years, but it has otherwise been always an entrance to the facility. Um, I will say, you know, there was never an argument to create one- I will say, you know, there was never an argument to create one main entrance and always have that one closed, and to address the safety concerns, that's, you know, one of the large reasons why the vestibule is being proposed as well, so I'll just leave that right there.
Aldy Speed?
Yeah, I, you know, historically, that was the main entrance, and then, of course, we changed the library, and it's certainly true that our new main entrance and our, our primary entrance to the library will be what we come into when we come into this building, and that's why the parking lot is there, and it's why we remodeled the stairway. Uh, I would liken it to, uh, you know, the decision of a homeowner to fix up their back door even though they have a nice front door. You know, you still have to get into your backyard, and in this case, the backyard are the people that can walk to the library. So to the extent that we're encouraging people to walk places and not drive, I mean, there is a logic to not having someone walk all the way down the hill to come in the front entry when they're already walking past this entry, and then have to walk up the stairs or take the elevator. These improvements are being done precisely to address both energy loss when those doors are opened in the winter or when it's being cooled, and for safety concerns, so that you have that vestibule there and someone cannot easily go in and out. I do think that, you know, the library will be aware of this concern, and you can speak to this, Ryan, but, you know, we're certainly not going to invite a situation that is unsafe for children in the children's area. But I don't think we have to keep that door locked to address those concerns. Certainly, if, if I felt that it were going to be unsafe, I, I wouldn't be supportive of this either. I mean, my children spent their, their younger years in the children's book section of the library, but back when they were really young, that's where they came into the library, so...
You could still exit that door, couldn't you, even if we didn't have it as an entryway? Isn't it like an emergency exit, or wouldn't it be?
It was.
It was.
And, and I remember that was some of the discussion about when we were, when we were doing the other entrance, about would we ever consider that entrance, and, and why or why not? And those were the pieces, and it had to do with, as patrons were coming in, coming in and entering into the children's book area without entering in past other welcoming individuals in the library didn't seem like the best flow of that, so...
Anyone else?
Back to the pedestrian issue of how many sidewalks and pieces that we've encouraged people to come down the hill, to enter here, to cross where the community center is, I mean, goes to the whole point of why we added pedestrian access as well down on this end, not at the top end.
Alder Wood?
Well, actually, there is a sidewalk that goes from Nichols to, to the entrance on top, so there's pedestrian access up there. I was just going to note...
For a half of a block, yes, but nowhere past, and nowhere on the other side of the road, past.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from Ryan on this one.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna note, we actually received this afternoon and one right before, well, 6:30, two online, um, comments for, you know, from the Civic Plus forums, supporting, one from Todd Stevens, the vice president of the library board, and another from Mary Anderson, both supporting keeping the vestibule.
We received one from Sue Carr earlier today as well.
Okay.
Ryan?
But, yeah. I was going to ask him if we have staff up, back in staffing the desk in the children's area now.
Well, so we, we do have staff at the children's desk, however, I will say that that is not staffed at all hours if the library is open. I can look to see how that can be the case in the future. In fact, I would prefer it that way. It will take some rearranging of, of some things in terms of the operating budget to do that, but we can definitely make that a higher priority if the city council and the community deem that that's something that they would like to see. I'll try not to repeat too much of what council's already stated, but as far as I'm aware, and the staff and everyone has been explaining to me about the, the projects down here as it relates to the stuff up there, you know, the, the parking lot, the biggest issue was safety in terms of the slope of the parking lot, and the parking lot will address that issue to help those who want to park there and make it come up. In, in doing that, however, I, I will just highlight that it is taking away a few parking spaces away, and with the idea, I think that some people could do that, since we are seeing, based on the, the visitor data, that there's somewhat of a shift where when those doors opened, it started at 12% of the visits, once they started separating out the visits from downstairs and upstairs, 12% were upstairs, and we're at the point where roughly 18%. So as the knowledge to the community is going around that that's actually an entrance, that's becoming, not the preferred entrance, but people like it enough where that count is rising up there.
And that was a pre, pre-constru, reconstruction of the library, right?
Correct. Yeah. And regarding the, the stairwell, I understand that, you know, we invested in that stairwell because that is the main entrance, however, I heard about this legendary previous staircase going up there that was essentially a service staircase, and the fact that it was used as a main staircase for such a long time is, in, in my opinion, unfortunate, but however, now we have this nice staircase as it should be for a main entrance. All that said, I know that that entrance is used quite often. I know that the families use it, and they like entering the library right there for their children's space. I completely understand the concern about safety, however, that is one of the reasons why we want a vestibule up there is to add a, a layer of safety where children, rather than walking out of set of doors, they're, you're adding entirely a separate safe space there. I do also just want to highlight the fact that staff, I believe from, I heard, staff were a little concerned about that entrance being open, and then over time, they have recognized it as being a, a great service to the community. Several staff have also explained to me how they hear from people in the medicine area how much they like this library because of the walkability of it. That is something that, it's a library that you could just walk to and enter, and I believe, now granted, they did not state this specifically, but in my opinion, it is because you could enter it from the bottom, but you can also enter up here. And again, I would look at the visitor data to show that that is becoming preferable to those people that are coming maybe from this direction, that they would like to have that entrance. And then finally, I will address the, the energy inefficiencies of both that and this entrance. This one especially, when I showed the, the architect, he kind of, he wanted to take pictures, it's kind of like, you know, this is a almost of antiquity kind of thing, this should not be this way in terms of energy efficiency, we're losing money as it goes out, so this project would address both entrances in that aspect. Lastly, I will just say, you know, Alder Homequist had some questions for me, and I appreciate those, and that hopefully the information I provided was, was helpful, and Alder Wood also asked me for some information, I provided it. If any other council members have any questions, if, if anything else I can provide, I'm more than happy to, please just let me know.
Alder Wood, did you have?
I just, I would suggest that you just go ahead and email the, the document you sent me today, and I think you've already sent it to Brian, with the more detailed cost estimate?
Sure.
From, from Arrow.
Okay. I'm more than happy to do it.
Anyone else? One thing I wanted to add, I was president of the library board when we did the major remodeling, and when we decided to close, to keep that door permanently closed, and our primary reason was because at that time, we didn't have staff in that children's room a large amount of the time. We had no staff there in the evenings or on weekends at all, and just part of the time during the day, so, and you couldn't really see the children's room real well from the staff desk. I think some of that's changed now, the, that workroom used to be a computer rooms, now there's staff in the workroom that's right next to the children's area, so there's much more, we have, you have much more staff there in the children's room now, even though it isn't 24/7, I know that.
Right.
But it's much more than it was at that time.
And especially in terms of the desk, you know, there may not be someone on desk, but usually there is a staff member in that area at all times. But, you know, again, if, if, if I could, I would have a staff member at the desk at all times, and definitely we can make that a priority. It will take some time, though, adjustment.
I would just say that, you know, I think I'm sensitive to the security concerns, and so I think it's worth looking at the staffing if we're going to go ahead with this, and the other thing is, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to consider whether or not it would be, it would be like a members-only entrance or something, where somebody would have to, and you'd put a key, you know, you'd put a card machine by it or something, so...
When you, I, I apologize, when you say members only, do you mean staff?
No, I, I mean, like, well, or community, I mean, yeah, we all get library cards, right? So I'm just, I'm just thinking of other ways that we might be able to secure it beyond having a full-time staff member there.
It's, it's an interesting idea. Um, my, my professional opinion, I, I would be against that in terms of the library being an open, an open building for all, that I would not want this almost gateway for these members only, but I think I understand what you're saying, but it would, that would have to be discussed and looked at a lot more.
Right, yeah. I'm, I'm not suggesting that we resolve it now, I'm just, I'm just trying to be sensitive to that security issue, so...
Again, yeah, of course, we want the library building to be secure, and it is a unique building. All I can say is there, we, we try to staff the building as best as we can, and we try to cover our bases where people are congregating. But again, I, I feel strongly that the vestibule would, would help that in terms of at least children leaving, in terms of someone coming into the library and, and taking them, I mean, I have not heard of anything happening like that in this area, but that's not to say that it couldn't, and we would do what we could to, to address that concern.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Ryan. Next item is 2A, or 2B, I'm sorry.
Before we leave the capital budget, I was wondering, since the rest has been stayed through all that discussion, if maybe, if someone from maybe the parks board wanted to talk about the Cold Springs Avenue lake viewing area and address the concerns raised.
Alder Kitzler or Alder Warren?
I'll, I'll give a crack at it, and then you can jump in.
I've got it here.
Thanks. So, uh, stepping back to maybe a 10,000-foot level, over the summer, Jake had a parks board meeting where we went around and we visited different parks throughout the city, and was trying to get our creative juices flowing about what are the possibilities for the parks. One of the items that was included, although not a park piece of property, was the idea of the Cold Springs dead end, looking at, and the premise was looking at spots to allow residents access to the lake who might not otherwise have it. So that was one of the options, was Cold Spring, and Cold Spring, you know, at least from my perspective, jumped because at one point, Public Works cleared it, and so, I mean, me and my wife, we would walk down there. So, I mean, it was, it was something that was, you know, visible and attractive to go down and check out. So we had the parks board meeting, and it was discussed and thought about a little bit more. And I should step back and say, one of the rationales is to provide residents lake access as much as possible, especially now as people are buying houses, tearing down, actually, what was a great house right next to Stonebridge, and now building probably something much larger, and building essentially a wall for access points for the residents. So, long story, that's kind of where we got to this idea. We put that in Jake's hands to hopefully talk to Dan about kind of the process and what are all the steps that might be done for a relatively simple project of just providing a viewing area, you know, in our minds at that point was just a bench so that people could watch the sunset. So that's where we got this proposal. You know, there was a number of residents that came to the parks board and voiced similar sentiments that Diane did, and I met with Diane also. You know, a lot of her concerns I had brought up with Dan and the mayor about no parking, you know, I'm amenable to that. I don't like the sign idea, so that was kind of a non-starter to me, it was nothing we ever talked about at the parks board meeting. And, yeah, and then we talked about some plantings that would be kind of natural fences on either side for the property owners to have a little bit more privacy. And we, I mean, we, we talked about a lot of different ideas, not to drone on longer, but we talked about adding, you know, some bouldering or something so that if a vehicle's brakes failed and, you know, went through, somebody wouldn't be sitting on the park bench. So we did talk about kind of those catastrophic incidences of safety, as well as, you know, just making sure that it's pleasant and an enjoyable situation, so, um, that's where we got, you know, I told Diane I'm supportive of, you know, keeping this in the capital budget. I do want those kind of amendments or to look at, whether it's no parking or getting rid of the sign, that type of thing. And I know, I shot an email to Dan after we had talked, and that was something Public Works talked about, and I know they were going to see kind of how that traffic played out, but I'd be interested in everybody's thoughts on that as well, so, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Um, no, except for when I left, since I've been out of town on business, I know this, I mean, this is not a park property, this is Public Works, so I know it was taught, in a sense, tossed back to Public Works, and I'm not sure where Public Works came down with it, except that I know it also is used in terms of, currently in terms of snow, correct? In the winter?
Public Works Committee did authorize the use of the street right of way to place a park bench.
Okay.
We, we want to hold off on any signage right now, we want to see how the situation plays out as far as parking, and with that, Public Works would help out any way we can, should that become a viewing area, so...
So you don't anticipate the, a park bench being there as being a problem in terms of the snow that goes down to that end of the road?
If it's installed, I guess, further away from the dead end, yeah, we, we'll have plenty of room for snow storage. Parks crews might, I, I don't know if it's planned to be a viewing area in winter, I'm not sure of that, but if, if the parks director wants to make it that way, crews can assist with snow removal as needed, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
And, and I'm assuming we'd also cross the bridge of addressing the, the rock and spring concern that was raised?
That's the first I heard of it, but definitely we, we have no plan to plug any spring. We'll, we'll have to, and, and that'll be Jake's area, but we'll definitely take a look at that and make sure we don't impact that, so...
Anyone else?
Well, I would just add that I, I know with the work that we've done in preparing for potential improvements at Stonebridge Park, which also has a natural spring, you know, the goal is always to just in, make our public spaces as enjoyable and useful to the public as possible, and so I was still on the parks board when we started talking about this, and I went on that tour of various waterfront areas, and, you know, we went to all of those parks that were mentioned, and I, I've lived at both ends of that area there, and I've often wandered down to the end of Cold Springs because it's just another place with another beautiful view. So I think whatever we do, we need to be thinking about safety, and I think we are, I mean, that's what we're talking about at Public Works Committee, how do we make that safe? How do we make sure that we can properly address snow removal in the winter? And we're certainly not going to plug a spring, so we appreciate that that's brought to our attention.
Anyone else? And I do think when we put this in the budget, I, I also was thinking, I wasn't thinking in terms of someone, people driving there necessarily, I, I think we thought of it, it's more of a people walking or riding their bikes, people in the area, so... There's nothing else?
No, I would just, you know, I would just say that we, certainly I would, you know, agree that we'll take into consideration everything that we've heard from the neighborhood in, in, in working with the improvements.
Item 2B, consideration of resolution 17-10-2220, providing for the sale of $4.16 million taxable note anticipation note, series 2017D. Finance Director, this is starred for immediate approval.
Move to take this item out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right.
This was a late add to the agenda, so I just painted out the fiscal notes. So what this is...
So what this is, it's 4,160,000 taxable note, it's made up of two things here. We're looking to borrow for all our TIF 9 projects, waterfront projects that we approved through the last couple of months, which would be the sewer pipe, demo costs, engineering, there's other costs that we already approved, which is going to be going on here, and sewer project is going right now. So that's 2.7. With that, since it's TIF 9, there's no increment coming in, we have to use capitalized interest, and that's about 360,000. So the total related to TIF number 9 is 3,60,000. And the other portion, looking to is refund, refunding amount of TIF number 4. We did a borrowing in 2007, a taxable geo-refunding bond, and we have 1,100,000 left. It was a taxable note back in 2007, and now, the interest, current interest rate that we're paying on our interest is 5.5%, and the note is finally callable, so we can call that. And according to our Jeff Palangi, he estimates we'll get taxable rates between 2 and 3%. So we have an estimated savings of about $80,000 with that. So this is just a process of him negotiating it, and he'd come back, he would come to the next meeting and come back with what he negotiated with his bond orders?
Any questions? I think this calls for a roll call.
Alder Speight?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to item 2C, consideration of Resolution 17-10-2218, approval of participation in a Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation safety grant titled Dane Suburban Seatbelt Task Force, put forward by the police chief.
Move to take this item out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve?
Second.
Lieutenant Wykel?
All right, for your consideration tonight, is a seatbelt traffic enforcement grant. This is done in conjunction with several other agencies in Dane County. It starred for approval for tonight, as it could begin as early as October 16th if approved, and run through September 30th of 2018. The Manona portion is 16,500 for overtime expenses for our traffic enforcement efforts. There is a 25% soft match with the grant, that's 4,125, and that can be covered by on-duty personnel efforts in traffic enforcement.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item D, consideration of Resolution 17-10-2219, approval of participation in a Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation safety grant titled 2018 Capital Area OWI Task Force, again, put forth by the police chief.
Move.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Move to take this item out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, Lieutenant?
This is a similar grant with an OWI focus. It is a nighttime grant, so it is done 6:00 PM to 4:30 AM, mostly on weekends or special events. Again, this grant could start as early as a couple of days from now and run through September 30th of 2018. The Manona portion's 13,500 for those overtime efforts, and with a 25% soft match, 3,375, and that is made up by fringe benefits and on-duty efforts.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 2E, consideration of ordinance 10-17-691 concerning fire and EMS fees, EMS fees put forward by the fire chief.
Good evening. This is an ordinance, currently, right now, we do not have the ability to charge when someone requests either an ambulance do a standby or a fire engine does a standby. So lately, we've been getting more and more requests for events throughout the city, marathons, that type of thing, and we want to have the ability to at least provide an ambulance if staffing allows, and recruit, recover the fees that would cost for that. This will allow us to staff an engine or an ambulance if the event requested it.
Any questions? Doug?
Yeah, so one thing that came up at finance is that the fees, the standby fee amounts, as it's drafted now, would be approved by the Public Safety Committee, and I was wondering whether it would be more appropriate to have it approved by City Council?
We, I just, similar to the way that we do our perishable goods on the ambulance, it goes to public safety, so once a year, we adjust those fees. This does not include the fee, like a transport fee. Transport fees for residents, non-residents, and non-transport fees have to come to this body. Just thought it would be easier to go to public safety, along with when we review our, all of our medications, all of our disposable goods, we could review this at the same time.
Okay, do you have an idea about what the fee would be?
Yes, the fee in, I don't have it off the top of my head, I believe it's 120 dollars that...
Is that an hour?
Per hour, for an ambulance and two EMTs, and the engine would be 150 dollars an hour, that's staffed with three firefighters.
Okay.
Anyone else?
And I know we discussed another part of this, finance, but, let's see, where was it? Basically, kind of the wording of the, the ambulance fee, when it's not covered by insurance and the waiver, I think we talked about possibly adding a sentence to that, that inability to pay may also be considered in granting a waiver request?
It's under item B, right? I think that's what.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah. Section 2B. 152-1.
Currently, that language is in the ordinance right now, the way it's written. That is not an addition to the ordinance, that's the way the ordinance is written right now. Currently, if I get a request for a waiver, they have to fill out paperwork, send the paperwork into, into us, we get this all through our billing company, and then I typically send it on to Mark, and Mark and I then determine whether or not they meet the threshold for it, which the majority tend to meet the threshold, as long as they give us the, the needed documentation. Some of it, it's kind of like pulling teeth to try to get the needed documentation, so.
I have a question about staffing levels. When you do these events, would these fees allow you to have adequate staffing regardless of the event, or is this kind of, while we're at the event, this is covered, but if we need to get called away, we're called away?
This would put a vehicle specifically for the event.
Okay.
So if the chocolate run wanted to have an ambulance staffed at the finish line, this would allow us to have that ambulance staff there. They would be specifically for that event. Obviously, if it's a catastrophic incident, we're gonna pull them off of the, the event, but they're, they're dedicated to that event.
But you would still have someone staffing the other ambulance?
Correct. The other ambulance would be staffed, no matter whether we had this going or not.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the final, item F, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85. On C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, this involves an employee disciplinary action, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Joan?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Speight?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session.
Are we just gonna adjourn?
Final item is reports of committees, commissions, boards, blah, blah, blah. Alder Core?
Oh, thank you. Reports?
Do you have anything to report?
Sorry, nothing to report today, thank you.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Speight?
No report.
Alder Wood?
Coincidentally, no report.
Alder Kitzler?
No report.
Alder Moore?
Nothing to report, except for to thank my fellow Alders for, for doing, having lefting while I was gone.
I'm sure it was fun watching it all on YouTube.
Yes.
If you have.
In my spare time. I have, indeed.
That's admirable.
Mayor O'Connor, actually, I do realize I want to report that the Sustainability Committee has launched a campaign to educate the citizens about keeping leaves out of the storm gutters, and people should expect to see signs around the community, and we have an adopted drain program that we are launching, and it's an opportunity for citizens to literally adopt a storm drain or two to keep leaf debris out of those drains, because research has shown that having the leaves in the street, literally during a rainstorm, creates a T of phosphorus, and it doesn't really matter if the leaves end up washing into the lake, the simple act of the water rinsing through the, the leaves and essentially creating a T, and then going down the drain and into the lake, that does the damage, and so, we're really hoping, in conjunction with the county and the Clean Lakes Alliance, to, to make a dent in phosphorus leaching from the leaves this fall and into the future.
And I have adapted the drain in front of my house, so I encourage you all to adapt a drain by your house.
How do you adapt? How do you do this?
City clerk?
No, I tried, mayor. Mayor? I tried to say mayor.
That's okay. I know, it's hard, it was tough to get. City Administrator Little?
Well, just one little thing, and unfortunately, she just left and probably didn't get home enough in time to watch this on TV, but just some kudos to Leah Kimmel from Anne on Winnacoa Road for her great customer service and helping her to navigate a downed tree incident, so. We don't usually hear from the public, so she actually left a voicemail, so I'm gonna pass that on.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
We hope, we've been working on the operating budgets, and we hope that those will be in your mailbox by Friday. I think we, I'm sure we'll send out an email, so it can be for some fun weekend reading. Committee of the whole is next Thursday, I think at 5:30. We have two committees of the whole for operating, and I will be providing food, I'm sure, as we did for Capitol. And then, the Fall Festival is this weekend, and so be sure to try and attend if you can, and my understanding is the parking lot, library parking lot will not be open, unfortunately. They tried to get it done, but they ran into some issues, and so we won't be able to use that. So anything else? No appointments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.